Say, good gravy, good meat. Good God, let's eat.
Which we should, but he said at the time, I think he said at the time, don't do that because the federal government hasn't changed their mind.
You guys are crazy not to turn.
The first.
You know.
Sharp choice.
One year later.
What happened?
Always, it was always.
That's why it's fine. And then he was, he was.
So when we were doing that. Really starting that. Are you testing it?
Testing out, starting the baby off.
She'll like it.
Six o'clock?
That's how I'm doing it.
It's not me. I turned mine off because I don't want Marvin Gaye ring phone to come up. Hi, Tammy.
How are y'all?
Well, we're, I'm blessed, I'm sure they are too. In fact, so saying I'm like that. So many papers this month. Okay, you ready? Will you call to order and roll call, please, and establish a quorum?
Carla?
Yes.
Autumn, yes ma'am, Sarah?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Join me in prayer, please. Our heavenly Father, we just come to you now and we just praise your holy name for who you are. Thank you for what you're gonna do in this city. I pray your blessings on each and every commissioner here, Father, and their family. I thank you for their service. I pray your blessings and protection upon our police and upon our city staff. And I thank you for what they do. I thank you for empowering them to do multiple jobs. I thank you for blessing them. Father, I pray that tonight, the decisions that we make would honor you and that they would strengthen this city and bond us together even more than we already are. Again, I can't thank you enough for who you are and what you've done for us. Please bless the city of Perkins from the bottom of my heart. Bless us with abundance and grace. In Jesus' precious name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Sorry, I get a little emotional. I love my city.
Real quickly, we need to make a record that Aaron Box was not called, but he's not present.
Okay, let's move. Okay. Consideration and action on consent agenda. Any commissioners have any questions on the consent agenda?
No.
I did, but Bob answered it beforehand, so I think we're good. So I make a motion that we accept and approve the consent agenda.
One second.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Carla?
Yes.
Autumn?
Yes, ma'am, Sarah? Yes.
Justin? Yes.
Look, appearances, petitions, communications, and personal appearances. Under Oklahoma law, the city commission members are prohibited from discussing or taking any action on items not on today's agenda. Anyone? No action? Seven. Consideration, discussion, and possible action to accept resignation of Ward One Commissioner Aaron Box effective August 23rd and declare vacancy of Ward One Commissioner position. Staff report?
We received an email on August 23rd stating he was going to resign his post.
Make a motion to accept.
Approved, I mean, not approved, but seconded. I approve your motion. Right.
Mayor?
Yes.
Autumn?
Yes, ma'am?
Sarah?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
All right, number eight. Consideration. Oh, sorry. Don't make it too fast.
This is my fault because I'm the one who said to do this agenda item this way. You accepted the resignation. Can we get a different motion declaring the vacancy?
I make a motion to declare the vacancy for the Ward One Commissioner position.
I second it.
Mayor?
Yes.
Autumn?
Yes, ma'am?
Sarah?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
You're welcome. Thanks for keeping us in line.
Yep, exactly.
Number eight. Consideration, discussion, and possible action to appoint a Ward One Commissioner. Appointment to end at 7:30 PM on April 10th, 2023. Staff report, Mr. Ernst, your thoughts?
You have 60 days by the charter. The charter says the commission shall appoint a vacancy among them. So you have 60 days from today's date, when the vacancy was declared, to appoint a commissioner to serve with you. Previously, when we've had vacancies in other boards, the commission has directed staff to advertise, put it out there, just like we did for planning commissioner Pida. And then you could set a date for a special meeting or you could consider applications at the October meeting and have candidates come forward if you'd like to at that time and then ostensibly appoint at the November meeting. Or you could do it quicker. That's with the 60 days starting now. If you wanted to have something appointed, have someone appointed, in October, you could advertise for a couple of weeks, call a special meeting, like October 4th, I think is a Tuesday, just for the sole purpose of considering candidates and then appoint on October 11th. Or you could change dates as you want to. If you're not able to agree within 60 days on a suitable replacement, then you have to call a special election.
And that cost the city?
Money.
Money, $3,000 to $6,000?
Probably.
Okay. Thoughts?
I make a motion to appoint Gary Varnell.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Yeah, I make a motion to appoint Jason Cox.
Okay, hold on.
But that's, we're kind of ahead of ourselves, aren't we? Because we need to decide whether we're gonna advertise it and put it out there first. I think is probably the next option.
I think it's the only right thing to do.
Okay, hold on, hold on, hold on. We have a motion and a second. So. You can have discussion on the Logan impression in a second. You can't have another motion until we vote, we voted on the motion in a second. Take a moment and have a discussion.
I just think there's two, there's two people that have put their names out there. I think we should hear from them first. And we've already kind of set a precedence for how we're gonna bring people onto boards. And that is putting it out there first and then letting the public know that there's an opening within the city and then going from there. I mean, that's how we did Park and Rec, Pida, and.
Library Trust.
And the Library Trust and things like that. I think we've already, we've already kind of established that a few months ago. And I think even with, even with this, the city charter says we shall appoint. But I think we should look at our options as well. Yes, two men have put their names in the pot and that is great. But not everybody reads the paper and not everybody realizes that, that there's a Ward One vacancy. Except for maybe commissioners who have reached out to people. So we don't know what's out there as a whole. So that's how, that's how I feel about it.
I hear that.
I make a motion because I, we received the communication from Gary Varnell that he was interested in the position. It's historically been, at least since I've been on this commission, there's been at least one open seat. And it hinders our ability to get work done equitably.
It does.
So I have an interest in being whole and moving the city along. I think we have a due diligence to do that, not just to city hall staff, but to the citizens. So I went ahead and made a motion since Gary is here and we've read his letter of interest.
The, the other gentleman that put in his name, he had a previous commitment with Stillwater Medical Center where he works at a conference. That's the only reason he's not here, or he would be here as well. I wasn't prepared tonight to hear people speak and step up and, and speak to the commission. And that is what I would like. I would like to have all, I would like to have the people that are interested in the position to come and speak before us, before making a decision. I might have somebody in mind that I like and you might have somebody in mind that you're interested in. But I think we should, we should hear everyone and I might change my mind after hearing someone speak to me in person about, you know, how they feel about the city and why they want to be here and things like that. And I think it also helps us with some transparency issues that we may or may not have within our city. So that's just my two cents worth on it. Justin?
I think we should hear from them. And I also think we should have a special meeting, but I don't want to waste any of the city's money.
I don't either. I don't either. I, I would like to follow the city charter. And I would like for the commission where it, it says, "We shall."
Yes.
Appoint, it doesn't say may, maybe, or, you know, think about it a while. It says, "We shall." And I think with the timeline that Mr. Ernst has lined out for us, we would have plenty of time to put that out there. We put things out there before and nobody responded. Okay? We know that within our city. But we have two gentlemen have put their name in the pot that are interested in serving our community. I think that we should put it out there, see what the community says, or not about them, but about themselves. And then if there's nobody else, then I would like to hear from both gentlemen here in person. And I love it, let's have a special meeting. Let's listen to them, let's chew on it, see their resume or whatever that's out there to offer. And I agree with Commissioner Hittiger that anything we can do to save the city some money is important. But I don't think we should jump the gun in appointing someone just to save the city money. Because I agree with Commissioner Rubello. We need a full commission to make things move forward. And we need someone who's gonna sit over there and stay over there so that we can move forward and make decisions and go to our planning meetings and go to our training and, yes.
So we need to vote again?
I would just like to say, I agree that it's prudent to get somebody in there quickly. But I just feel like for consistency sake with the route that we've taken recently with all of the other boards, that it's the right thing to do to open it up and give everyone dolage and then proceed. But I agree with what you're saying, that it needs to be done quickly.
Quickly, but prudently?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, was your motion?
It was.
Okay, you can either, we can have a, call a, vote on a motion or you can draw your motion or you can modify your motion. Does your, tell us what you want to do.
Um, I modify my vote, motion and make a motion to advertise the open vacancy for the Ward One Commissioner position and direct the city hall staff to advertise on social media and the website, how we've been doing per policy for other boards. And I remain with my support with Gary Varnell.
Absolutely.
Okay, then do you modify your second?
Do you modify your second? Oh, but I have to do a special meeting?
Yep, hold on.
I'll do it. Make a motion.
Then let's, let's, you made a motion for a special meeting. We just, so let's stop with that motion and vote on that.
Okay, hold on.
Are you, are you good?
Yes.
Are you, does, do all four of you understand what the motion is?
I would like it reread back to me before I vote, please.
Sarah has moved to advertise, open the vacancy for Ward One vacancy. And we ended after that.
As we have done for other boards. And then it'll be considered as a special meeting, which we don't need to set the date for because the mayor.
Now, did you say special meeting?
I don't think you said that.
But I.
No, Justin, we're.
If I need to, I will.
It will be.
It'll be a special meeting because our next regularly scheduled meeting is not within the 60 days or what is?
It is.
It barely is, but it is.
I'd like to clarify one thing while they're working that out. I'm sorry to interrupt, but this isn't my timeline. This is the timeline in the charter. I just.
Absolutely. You're just regurgitating what's written down.
Good word.
I did, did not sound, sorry.
Regurgitate and ruminate.
So let's, let's go ahead and have, have you voted on the motion without the special meeting? Because someone could decide they want to vote on yes on the motion and no on a special meeting because of our timeline. So let's do that.
We can set that date later, I mean, here in a little bit, can't we?
It doesn't have to be part of this decision.
I made a motion, so if we're going to make a motion to advertise the open ward spot, we'll need a second.
I will second that.
She called for voting, so. Okay, Mayor?
Will you, before I vote, will you please reread the whole thing for me?
We are, Sarah has moved to advertise the vacant Ward One position as we have done for the other boards.
Thank you, yes.
Autumn?
Yes, ma'am?
Sarah?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Are we ready to proceed? Do we need to set a date before we advertise?
What, can I suggest a date?
Can I have a question for you? How, we've, I, I don't remember the timeline that we have given for the other boards. Has it been two weeks? Has it?
Typically, it's been asked that we advertise those positions at a meeting and we have given them until Friday prior to the next meeting.
So.
Simply because.
It won't be the 30th.
I just feel like, well, it may not fit the timeline. I'd like consistency, so it's just a thought. I mean, I don't, I'm not, I'm not willing to change that perspective. I just, it's a.
October 7th? But if we're gonna have a special meeting on the 4th.
Oh, right, 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 right. Oh, sorry.
Then we should probably have that deadline the 30th of September. And I agree with Commissioner Foote.
It should remain consistent.
As consistent as possible. That keeps us, our integrity and everything else intact.
While we're on this agenda item, do we, is everyone available on October 4th? Is that the, is that the special meeting date for this?
It is for me. Softball's over.
10:40 on 10:40.
I can make it work.
Yes.
I miss a football game, but I can make it work.
So just for clarification, doesn't, you know, even in the motion, that the, the advertisement would run through Friday?
September 30th. September 30th.
Special meeting on October 4th? And then agenda item on October 11th?
Actual appointment. I'm good.
The special meeting be at 6:00, 6:30, 5:30?
Uh, 6:00. It's gotta work for everybody.
Yes, yes, sir.
I mean.
Autumn, does that work for you? Do you want it later?
It's, it's fine.
It could be later.
No, it's fine.
For you.
I guess it could be earlier too. Change the location as well.
It should not be recorded.
Let's have a little bit of non-call in. Are we ready to proceed? Okay, item agenda number nine. Consideration, discussion, and possible action to approve purchase order to Vance Country Ford for purchase and nullification of lease agreement of a 2022 Ford interceptor utility vehicle for the use by the police department in amount of $53,331.97 pursuant to state contract pricing utilizing public safety sales tax funding.
In the previous fiscal year, the commission had approved a lease purchase on a new police car. Of two payments, first last fiscal year, the next final payment this fiscal year. We still have not received that vehicle. So now we would just be able to nullify the lease purchase and do a straight purchase and save the city money on interest, assuming we receive it.
So, so it's on the purchase order agreement twice. And I meant to call you earlier and I forgot. So it's on the purchase order at 8122 Vance Country Ford for $54.90, 946.97 and then it's on the purchase order again for 829.22. Is that like?
That's two vehicles.
Two different vehicles, okay, thank you.
Yeah, you just approved purchasing another one.
Second, yes, I remember that now and that's why I meant to ask you and I ran out of time.
So ostensibly, we should, with any luck, receive two vehicles.
Great, great. I remember that now, thank you. I make a motion to approve the purchase, lease agreement with Vance. Oh, the nullification of the Vance Country Ford.
And approve the purchase.
And approve the purchase, yes, sir.
I second. Oh, Autumn, take it.
I don't know, you're infamous for the seconds.
She is, isn't she?
Risky, otherwise, guys.
She just. Some nights she's quicker than others, isn't she? She's like, whoo, quick draw. I know, right?
Mayor?
Yes.
Autumn?
Yes, ma'am?
Sarah?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Item agenda number 10. Consideration, discussion, and possible action to approve Resolution 11-2022, a resolution adopting a code of ordinances and biennial supplement therein two for the city of Perkins, Oklahoma, and repealing permanent and general ordinances not included in the code.
So state law requires that you approve and supplement and sup, that you supplement your ordinance book at least every two years and provide copies to the law library, get them online, keep it up to date. It's, it's not simple. And that's what this is, is just our biennial supplement ordinance process.
I have no question. Any, can we? Am I having questions about it? It's pretty cut and dry.
I make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Mayor?
Yes.
Autumn?
Yes, ma'am?
Sarah?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Item agenda number 11. Consideration, discussion, and possible action to approve ordinance. What? Oh, sorry. 489, an ordinance amending Perkins City Code Title 10, Planning and Zoning, Chapter 7, Establishment of Districts, Article C, Commercial Districts, Section 5, Area and Supplemental Regulations, Paragraph F, Screening and Declaring an Emergency. Staff report?
This is to change one word in the code.
I see that.
In the commercial, um, in the commercial zoning, there's a, a specification that a screening fence be constructed be if, if you're bordering residential. And we recently had an issue with, uh, Woodlands and Cloth in the deer feed place where they wanted, they went before the planning commission for parking lot approval and it got approved. Well, the property they abut that is adjacent to them does not want a screening fence.
They do not?
No, she does not. She was at the meeting and she said, "I really don't want a fence because I want to look at it because it's, they have plants out there and everything and it's nice." Well, our code at the time, or our code right now doesn't allow any latitude for the planning commission or the city commission. So we just want to change the word "shall" to "may."
Okay.
And then it'd be a case-by-case basis.
Absolutely. It's funny how one word changes everything.
It really does.
It really does.
So I have to.
And we'll try to be quiet down here.
That wasn't her best teacher voice.
Me?
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
I'll second.
I'm sorry, that was you, Sarah?
I seconded.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
It's usually typically Commissioner Rubello that seconds. So if you have any hesitancy, just. Probably Sarah.
Mayor?
Yes.
Autumn?
Yes, ma'am?
Sarah?
Yes.
Justin?
It's a good one. It is your thing. Uh, item agenda number 12. Consideration, discussion, and possible action on declaring an emergency on ordinance 489.
Just so we, you can take action real fast, so you can take action on that right now, right?
Yeah, we just.
So is that, that's a do.
It just makes it.
No, we just did, we just did 12. Now we want to do 12 to declare an emergency.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
12.
Mayor?
Yes.
Autumn?
Yes, ma'am?
Sarah?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Item agenda 13. Consideration, discussion, and possible action to approve ordinance 490, an ordinance amending Perkins City Code Title 5, Public Safety, Chapter 7, Animal Control, and Declaring an Emergency. And that's 22 pages long. Thanks, Bob, appreciate that.
It's not really Bob's fault.
Thanks, Tammy, appreciate that.
Although the police department did.
Need some caffeine for that one.
And I'm gonna ask that you pass this item for a moment because I thought that your packet would have the redline version, so I didn't print out a redline version so that I could tell you what the changes are that we made to the code. And so Rachel has run over to print me out a copy, so we can work through that. I apologize, but if you'll skip these two items, um.
13 and 14.
And, and we could come back to them, I would appreciate it.
So my question for you is, is if we're, do we need to pass it to our special meeting on October 4th?
No, we'll come back to it.
Just in this moment, we're gonna come back to it? Okay.
We definitely will address it tonight, just, I need that copy first.
So I'm gonna write, pass, tempo? I had to take my jacket.
It's warm in here.
I'm not usually hot, but I'm hot, I know other people are hot.
It's like my gym.
Like, if I'm hot, other people are smaller.
Kids complain about my gym being too hot.
Yes, thank you.
Are we ready to move on or?
Yeah.
Go to.
Okay. Item agenda number 15. Consideration, discussion, and possible action to approve master service agreement with Mears Engineering LLC to approve civil engineering professional services. Mr. Ernst?
There were several, I interviewed and talked to several different engineers and landed on Aaron Mears out of Edmund. He's worked for the big firms. He's now going out on his own. He's been on his own for a little while. There is an agreement for services in your packet. I don't know how you want to word that. The city attorney has requested some changes to his agreement. Nothing of any, I don't know, it doesn't really affect the agreement per se.
Substantive.
Yeah. So I would request that the commission approve. I don't know how you want to word that, the agreement that's.
Yeah, it changes. Would really like to get an engineer on board. Normally, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say, no, let's get it all in place. But at this point, if I can give a name, see the suggestions in the redline document and give you what needs to change, I would, I would support a request for a motion to approve subject to attorney review.
Okay, so you are okay with putting him on board right now with, and then waiting on the changes?
Well. Yes, even I, under the agreement, he could actually start work. And then before, we have a written agreement. And I suspect that he, so the mayor may not do that. I, I suspect that we're gonna have a written agreement very shortly.
Okay.
And so if you're approving it subject to review, you're basically saying, we're gonna let the mayor sign it. Maybe not tonight.
Please go.
But after the attorney's review.
Review and approval.
Approve and approval of attorney.
So I could, I could actually not sign it tonight, but come back in. So I could, I could actually not sign it tonight, but come back in and sign it after you have completed.
Yeah, because it's not ready for signing.
Yeah.
Because I, I would feel more comfortable putting my name on a piece of paper after you have completely finished something.
That's what we were planning to do.
Okay.
I love hearing that.
Not signing it until I know it. Okay, and Mr. Ernst, Bob, you're, you're very, you're comfortable with this? And you're happy with it?
I am, and it's not, it's, it's not an exclusive agreement.
Okay.
We could.
Well, I saw the termination part, it was like you can, you can separate.
Yeah.
Both parties can separate.
It's pretty generic, I mean, it's, it's easy to get out of, we can use other engineers for different projects if something comes up.
There's no conflict of interest using him in our city with anyone, okay.
It's not exclusive, but it does, it does provide that unless it's a, a bigger project, that he is the city engineer.
Yes.
In other words, which like for me, I wouldn't probably be real happy if, if that you could go get other city attorneys to tell you other things on a regular basis. So it, it's not exclusive, but it does have some provisions that unless we're, we're funding a project over a certain amount, we're going, he's going to be the city engineer.
So approving this agenda item means that if we needed him to do some, this is just for session, but if we needed him to do something tomorrow, it would be legal and ready for him to do if he accepted on his end as well.
And if he did something tomorrow, we would pay him according to these terms that we have worked out.
Okay.
And that we anticipate working on.
And he was, he was going to be here, but he had a previous engagement.
That's what she said, I, I understand that. Uh, would it be possible for us to meet him at the next?
Should be.
Next meeting, okay. Okay, sounds good. Conditions.
Next regular meeting?
Yes.
A regular, yeah.
Yes, next regular meeting, we need to keep the special meeting special, I think. Okay. I make a motion that we approve the master service agreement with Mears Engineering LLC. Uh, contingent on Ms. Tammy Ewing completing and confirming the contract. I made Tammy smile, just so you guys know.
She's very smiling. Made you smile.
I made Tammy smile.
I smiled.
No.
That's why I said you were smiling.
Sarah DeFinger, that's like Sam Don is funny.
Mayor.
Yes.
Autumn.
Sarah.
Yes.
Justin.
Yes.
Oh goodness, thank you sweetheart.
Thank you very much.
So this is the, okay. More reading?
More reading.
I love you.
You, so, so whenever you're ready. Mayor, we can go back to the other items number thirteen, oh, back to item number thirteen.
Could, could I have a moment to?
Absolutely.
Oh, yes.
Compare real quick? I'm not signing.
The version in your packet is a clean copy of the red line that she just handed.
Rachel, thank you for going and getting those.
You're very welcome, so we just need to bring them over.
Apologize?
No, absolutely not. Twenty-four, four, two. Seven B five, seven B ten. It's all shortened to seventy-two to twenty-four.
Where I want to point out. And if you want, I can kind of give you the big picture and then you can go back and look at it to however you want to do it.
I can do both.
Or we can do the big picture and you can. I mean, it's whatever you're.
Sorry.
Whatever you need.
Whatever.
That sound makes me.
Oh, the paper?
It's not as much as it looks.
No, it's not, actually. Is it as bad as listening to people?
The revision is very much improved from what it was. Very much.
I've. Rachel, thank you for making the changes easy to find.
Actually.
Tammy, excuse me.
All right, we have a show here, so thank you. You're welcome.
So we addressed that in the first packet. I mean, Tammy did promise cookies at one time, I haven't seen those cookies yet.
I fell through on those.
I mean.
Empty promise.
And they try and laugh.
So people can have goats in there. She's going to stop, right?
Chick, I just used to ship, I don't remember.
I'm good, you guys good? It feels like it's, it feels like it's more than fully actually. Okay. Thank you for the time. I mean, you guys are ready. Justin, you ready? You can take longer, it's fine. Sarah didn't bring us any food, but we can still keep going.
Yeah. There's some mint in my purse.
Hey, she's a foodie, I'm still waiting to cook for y'all, but do we have to call up the corn man? I'd beat you.
It's fine.
Oh, man.
Oh. At least we're having fun.
At least we're not boring.
We're having fun.
Okay.
We are having fun.
I, Justin, I sometimes I feel sorry for you, but sometimes I know.
Oh, excuse me.
Okay.
You ready?
Commissioner Fofo, Commissioner Rebello.
I'm ready.
Mr. Commissioner.
Hi.
Are we all ready? Okay.
I make a motion to accept a city ordinance for.
Okay, let me explain.
I know you know, because you've been up on this, but let me talk a minute, can I talk?
Oh, okay, you're fine. I just didn't want the second, I wanted the motion.
I know you. Oh, she's not even going to wait for a second.
Yes, she is, and I was ready to chime.
Okay, let me just say, you can see on the first page that I took out the whole term vicious dog and replaced it. What happened is at some point in our history of ordinances, somebody inserted vicious dog. And then we also had dangerous dog and they didn't go together and they didn't connect. And we, the way that our ordinances read under dangerous dog made it difficult. I can go into detail if you want, but to prosecute someone for possessing a, a, a danger, an animal that has bitten a human under certain circumstances. And it really tied the hands of a municipal judge on how to deal with, um, dangerous or menacing dogs. And so having gone through a couple of municipal court cases, well, one and a half essentially, I, I, well, there was actually discussions with, I got a call at home on a Saturday night, which never happens, uh, you know, saying, okay, how do you want us to do this? Under the ordinance, because it was just that difficult and, and, um, and, and writing the charge actually that was charged. And so I took it upon myself along with the Police Department to try to make it make more sense and give, and number one, make it very clear what's supposed to happen if there's a dangerous dog and what kind of, um, charge is filed. And number two, to give the municipal court discretion and options. So if you, so basically what I did was I took out any reference to vicious dog and kind of cleaned that up and added the concept of a menacing or dangerous dog. So a dog can be menacing and not necessarily cause serious bodily injury to someone. And they can still, their owner, the owner or possessor can be charged to municipal court. Depending on whether it's menacing or severity of a bite, the, the court can then have options of, okay, we, we're, you're going to keep the dog, but you're going to have a whole bunch, we're going to have restrictions. And we've given the court a list of possible restrictions. Or the judge can even come up with something that really fits the case.
So there's, there's a better, there's a spectrum.
There's a spectrum, or the judge can say, this dog needs to be put down. And the dog, the judge can order the dog put down. So, um, it really does, but it gives, it gives parameters, it also sets forth a notice and hearing provision that we did not have clarified as to, um, so that there, there's, there's, there can be this time period between a charge being brought and defendant, dog owner actually getting to court. And the question always comes up, what happens to the dog in the meantime and who's paying the, the boarding fees or, you know, all of that. So it provides for notice and a hearing that's exclusive to what happens to the dog right now.
So it allows the judge to make a determination based on those circumstances and not.
Right, it doesn't necessarily tie what happens to the dog to what happens with the defendant's criminal charge. And, um, so it's, it, uh, that, those were the, the goals that I had in mind. I can tell you that this was mostly pulled from, um, Oklahoma City and another city's ordinance system. We do not expect to go model Oklahoma City because everything they do is more complicated than, I should mention, everything we do. But we were able to, to reduce the scope, make it less complicated, using some, I think, good ideas that they had. So we did look at other cities and, uh, I'll tell you, most of them had ordinances that were as orderly, uh, processed as ours. But this is. Very good. Any questions? And I know Sarah, this has been an issue that Sarah and I have talked about before, so I know that she knows, she's like way ahead maybe of the rest of you on this part of the information without this.
She beat me to it.
I haven't really shared it as much with the rest of you, so.
Well, I, I for one have had citizens stop me as I was driving joggers and, there's a few joggers in town that have started carrying mace with them. Joggers and walkers and so I really, I, kind of like Commissioner Rebello, it, it hits ho- it hits home because it affects a lot of citizens and what, and it needs to be done with some of the animals and some of the owners that are, are out of control, so to speak, and not following the law. So I like it and, yes, thank you ma'am, appreciate it.
I think our animal control officer will appreciate this as well.
Justin.
She is awesome.
She is.
My only question is about the self-defense of the citizen.
What page is that?
Page eleven. Dash seven C. Any person may kill a dog.
Seven C. Seven C.
Uh, ten.
Ten. Did you mean Tommy Overturk? Okay, we took that out, are you saying we should have left that in?
Yeah, I'm just curious why.
Oh, why I took it out? Because I don't think you have to ever establish that you can kill an animal and take actions in self-defense. You know, self-defense is, is, is going to all, oh, okay, a couple of reasons. One, I don't know that we need to, to establish self-defense and number two, we're not going to charge somebody.
I just want to make sure that.
Under this ordinance for killing a dog.
And so we're, we're protecting the citizen that has to defend themselves and a police officer that may have to defend themselves. Taking that out?
Well, we took that out. Okay, let me. It's under. I guess I just didn't see it as being necessary or being in the appropriate place to establish a defense, but it doesn't hurt.
But are you, are you saying that under this ordinance, we wouldn't charge somebody for acting in their own self-defense to put down a vicious animal?
I'm not sure what we would, we wouldn't be charging them under this ordinance, what, what, what might we charge them under? It would have to be cruelty to animal, right?
But if they were protecting themselves, this ordinance protects them.
It's kind of a case by case basis, when are you?
What are the circumstances?
When are you, yeah, I mean.
And so that goes back.
It would be under the, excuse me, sorry.
No, you're fine, go ahead, I interrupted you.
So the circumstances would be present whether there was an ordinance or a specificity, specificity, got it? Um, in this ordinance or not, because it's, the judge can determine that there are special circumstances.
Well, in, in that case, that someone killed a dog in self-defense, this would give them a defense to a, all I can think of is cruelty animal charge. Which isn't, if you wanted to put it somewhere, you should go in the cruelty to animal provisions and not under, under this provision. But, um, and maybe that's, maybe that's where we add it. We did, uh, we did, um, make one change to the cruelty animal provisions.
I don't remember, I, I think you always have a right to defend yourself. It has to be written down.
I mean, we know that.
Here in the state of Oklahoma, animal rights are, uh.
Well, it's pretty much about domestic violence laws.
Yes, sir.
For real.
That was just my concern. What's your?
You couldn't. My concern is that I don't, somebody be charged criminally for defending themselves, that's my concern.
Is there a way to write that and protect a person from that?
We were going to write it, I would write it into the cruelty to animal provisions, which is, um, which is still in there, it's on the back.
It's twenty and then on the, on the previous one, it's twenty-two.
Can somebody do a motion and move that?
So we'll go. It's pretty clear on the cruelty prohibited, doesn't mention.
It's really more a charging decision.
Defending yourself.
Justin, I think that might be a charging decision because you can't be charged with a crime if the facts show that you defended yourself.
I mean, you can be charged with it and then it is a defense that you would have at, um.
Just walking down the street and shooting a dog versus walking down the street and shooting a dog. that's running at you, baring its teeth and-
And I agree with you. I just don't think there's anything more that we could add or omit here in order to protect somebody from that with, that isn't already in law by being able to protect people. But I agree, I agree with you. That would be a major concern.
And changing willfully is the key word there too.
Well, yeah.
All I did was change spelling, willfully.
Yeah, I saw that. I, I saw that. And I'm terrible at spelling, but I-
How did, how do you, what do you think of that?
I didn't change the substance.
No, that's fine.
I, I, if you want to move that the language stricken in five-seven-C-ten be added to Be added as five-seven-E-five, we could certainly go, I could certainly do that. I'll say that again. On page, we could say that you moved to add the language in five-seven-C-ten on page eleven to as five-seven-E-five on page twenty-three.
E-five?
In added five.
Okay, yeah, it would be added five. How would, off the top of your head, how would you word that, Ms. Ewing?
Five. Yes, ma'am, I'm sorry?
How would you word that? How, you know, off the top of your head, adding in a, an E-five?
The language stricken in as, that was stricken, that was five-seven-C-ten.
Added as language.
Added as five-seven-E-five.
Not be stricken and moved.
No, no, because we need to-
So I'll make a motion to approve the new city ordinance with five, sorry. Five-seven-C-ten be stricken, moved to five-dash-seven-E-five.
A second. Got it.
You did.
So may or not sign that?
No, I'm fine. I was just, I, I really, I really liked how-
Oh, you got a vote. Sorry.
You got a vote. I'm just saying that.
Scratch it?
I'm going to say yes because I agree with Commissioner Henderger. I think he, um, worded that very well.
Mayor?
Yes.
Autumn?
Pam?
Sarah?
Yes.
Justin?
Okay, moving along. We are on sixteen. We did, oh wait, we got to do fourteen real quick. Consideration, discussion, and possible action on declaring an emergency on ordinance four ninety.
Make a motion to approve and declare an emergency on ordinance four ninety.
Second.
Mayor?
Yes.
Autumn?
Ms. Pam?
Sarah?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Now, sixteen, is that where we are? Jean, am I on the right one? Consideration, discussion, and possible action to select a project to submit for consideration to the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three rule Economic Action Plan REAP Grant Program.
This is a grant, we try it each year. It's a fifty thousand dollar grant. And we would recommend putting backup generators on two of our water wells. The, there's two quotes, one for Cummins Diesel Generators and then one for Generac Natural Gas Three Phase Generators. After doing a bunch of research, I think it might be smart to go with the Generac Generators for sixty-one thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars and forty-four cents. And this would just be approve us to applying for the grant, for the fifty thousand dollar grant.
So I did some research this afternoon on it and I, I agree with Bob because of diesel, diesel prices are high right now. But if you look at the research, it suggests that you use diesel because in the long run, it can be more cost efficient to use diesel. After having said that, in the wintertime, diesel tends to chill or gel. And if it's a backup generator and you're going to have diesel sitting in it for who knows how long, it may not do its job. Is that right, Bob?
Yep.
It may not do what we want it to do. It could go bad. Like I said, it can chill up on you and clump up and you're just going to ruin your generator. So in the long run, looking at the fact that it is a, um, backup, I think we should go with what Mr. Urck said about using the, um,
I'm not opposed. I just, isn't, maybe I'm misunderstanding. Isn't there diesel that is made, isn't, is winterized? I mean, for diesel pickups and tractors?
Sure. In addition to that, one of the issues is you have to have somebody that's always remembering to check the diesel, make sure it's at the correct level. And then if you have a power outage where a whole community is down for extended period, gas stations may not be able to pump fuel. So you get a generator up there. These would run on natural gas.
Is that right into it?
Should always be coming through the line.
I mean, that was just my question was just-
And you told me earlier today that the, uh, natural gas lines are fairly close to where we're going to need them to tie into.
Yes, yes, yes. Yeah, we have a natural gas generator at City Hall.
I was just-
And the, and the P.
I think it's a really good angle, so that's great.
I think it's best.
I really, I can't thank you enough, Bob, for, I know some of it was last minute, but I can't thank you enough for the conversation we had. So I could be here when I got here. And so I, I want you to know, kudos to you for that. I appreciate it. So, um, on the motion on this, does it need to, Tammy, does it need to specify that we're going with natural gas or diesel? Or acceptance, or do we just need to say we accept their quote over their quote?
Selecting a project.
Just make a motion to select a project for natural gas generators.
For natural gas generators, there you go.
To water wells.
So I make a motion that we use, uh, grant program to select a project for two emergency generators for our water wells, natural gas.
Mayor?
Yes.
Autumn?
Yes, ma'am.
Sarah?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Item number seventeen. Consideration, discussion, and possible action to approve commitment of fifteen thousand in capital and proof and sales tax as matching funds for the REAP grant. That's it.
This is so we can, we, we had the fifteen thousand dollars set aside for this purpose. It's in the budget. This would allow us to have a dog, have some more skin in the game when we apply for the grant versus applying for no match or just only what we need.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve?
Mayor?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Pam?
Sarah?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Item, uh, agenda item number eighteen. Consideration, discussion, and possible action to approve planned use development, uh, PUD for Lover's Lane Senior Living Development as recommended by Planning Commission on August eighteenth, twenty-twenty-two.
Katie Purdy's here from Gosson Associate Engineering. If you have any questions about the PUD, but it's, it's here on paper. It's a senior living, kind of a gated. Oh, I don't, if you want to see it, you come down or I can bring it up there however. But it's a, uh, senior living. There's four structures. Is it seven? Or a structure, they're sprinkled. It's gated on the Lover's Lane side. Basically used for a fire apparatus exit or entrance. The fire department would have a queue, it'd be an ox box. And it was approved by the Planning Commission. Staff doesn't see any reason not to approve it. Would you like to see what I'm talking about? It's three.
I already checked it out. It's good.
There's a, it's Car and Circle, Ham's Drive, Lover's Lane. This is what they would be in. This is a structure.
I think apartments are here, right? Am I correct?
It's like three acres of land, isn't it roughly? Two, seven? All of the, uh, all of the utilities would be- Okay, all of the utilities would remain private property?
Yes.
So they just tie into us. They, they have sewer lines in there, streets and all that.
So we're asking to change the city code?
No, you're just asking for final approval for them to move forward with this project.
But technically, they put four buildings on one lot.
Yeah, that's-
It's all it did. It put four individual units on a lot where the code before said you could only have like one residential building.
Yeah, the reason you have planned use development is to, um, give variances to, so they want to have one piece of property that's going to remain owned by one person. There's going to be four buildings on it.
Great option for-
Yeah.
It's a great option. We've already had people ask us about it from the community, how it would be available one.
And they have, um, driveways, right?
And garages.
Driveways and garages.
And garage, driveway.
Single vehicle.
Single vehicle garage.
And you've already had a lot of interest, like-
We've had, we, so at the, at Planning Commission, somebody came up to us and asked us about, about it. She was interested in moving into it once it was built.
Yeah, timeframe.
I think Bob said bricks out there right now.
Yeah, they're, they're in the roll.
So they're ready to roll and roll. And our, the developer has quit moving, so I would assume in the next year, year and a half, so. Are there sidewalks in that?
Question.
There are not sidewalks proposed because it's a dead end street. We, I mean, if anyone came from Car and Circle, they wouldn't be able to get anywhere. Um, you know, they, we wouldn't, we're not going to put a sidewalk out to Lover's. So there isn't- I just worry about, I mean, I feel like it's important for our elderly to have safe options to walk. Right? I mean, that, I mean, that's, I feel like that's a very necessary thing for them, especially on that side going to Lover's Lane because they, I mean, I don't know, they just, I think that that's, I think they should have that option. Because if they're, if they're in a motorized wheelchair and they want to go down to Car and, and go to even, just ride down to the park or something, just to get out and do something different, they're on the street, even in that one little section.
So we-
I mean, that could always be added in. I think it would be nice for them to-
So on the Lover's Lane side-
A safe place to ride other than on the road.
We have an asphalt sidewalk on the Lover's Lane side there with the handicap ramp.
I'm just talking about on this, this stretch right here.
Stretching their driveway and go that route at a time.
Yes.
But there's not a direct sidewalk running across.
Is there a handicap ramp over here on this side where the actual street is?
Right over here on Car and Circle side.
Is there supposed to be a sidewalk right there?
There's no sidewalk on that side either.
There is no sidewalk here.
I just, I-
There's no sidewalk going this way or this way past our property.
With the driveways, it would be difficult to have a sidewalk down here through the middle.
Right, you would have all these-
Because these are the garages and this is the driveway and these are the garages, right? And do they enter into their dwelling from here?
They would come this way. This is the only entrance.
But so inside, to get inside is like right here, there's their entrance?
Yeah, there's their little paths, their sidewalk paths.
Sidewalk path. And then this is how they get into their dwelling?
Is the sidewalk on this side of Car and Circle?
There's no sidewalk.
Oh, on this side? She said no, on this side? I don't recall.
There's no sidewalks on that side either.
That's because that was approved a long time ago.
For that. I just worry about-
That Car and Circle was approved.
So are these going to be leased or are they owned by the residents? Do you have a number on what that looks like?
What the cost? Am I crazy? Am I worried?
No, you're not crazy.
No, because the, and Perkins were trying to get sidewalks.
We're trying to get sidewalks.
Yeah, I believe that that's a goal.
Yes.
So if somebody's going to come in and make a new development, then they need to put in a sidewalk.
Especially in an elderly neighborhood, to me, a safe place for them to be able to even just get out and walk with a walker or a cane, just for a little, a little exercise.
At the very least, there should be sidewalks right here.
I concur.
I mean, if you're going to come in and develop this area, then you should put a sidewalk at the very least.
Because this is your entrance in. And that means if anyone comes out, like you said, in their walker or in their motorized thing, they should be able to exit here and take a sidewalk to go for a walk or go outside.
That's the way that it is in Charm, isn't that correct? There are sidewalks in that neighborhood.
Yes.
Is that correct? And it's on both sides?
I can look here.
Are you doing the satellite view on the Google?
Yeah.
And I'm thinking if they, there is a sidewalk, they do have the option to go to that nice sidewalk, that asphalt sidewalk on that side. Like if you tie it in, then, then it gives them an option for this person to walk from Lot One over to Lover's Lane and walk that whole stretch of Lover's Lane and get that little exercise.
Get back in here where there is sidewalk. But then my point is, and they'd have to turn around and walk back this way to get it because there isn't sidewalk over here. There isn't even a handicap accessibility.
I just was, I mean, I agree a hundred percent with what you're saying. I'm just saying like at least in this section, I feel like it's prudent just so they would have, so this person could at least walk down, go down, walk, you know what I mean? And like have the opportunity for that exercise and that freedom.
Is, so there's going to be a gate on Lover's Lane and it's not for through traffic? It's for emergency services? So this is a dead end?
Yes.
They can't even access?
Well, I'm wondering if we, if they had sidewalks, that's what I'm saying. If there were a sidewalk, even if it's not, you know, on the other side of that gate, they could access that sidewalk, this sidewalk on Lover's Lane.
No, but what I'm saying is it's a gateway.
Oh, so they could, oh, sorry, yeah, so they can't even get this way.
So you're going to have an access code.
Yeah, I guess my only concern is a gateway for emergency.
So why have I- Slow it all down and duck, double buckle for each other in case there's ever an audio.
Okay. Well, yeah.
You're discussing. Thank you. No, yeah, it's a locked, from what I understood, it's a locked gate where it's-
Here, you see access gates?
But it's a lock and key.
So this right here is a locked gate. So residents cannot come out this gate and go for a walk. I'm not saying drive out. I'm saying walk out and access the side, sidewalk.
Not through that. If, if we did this, we would need to put a sidewalk right here that would attach on. But one of my concerns with the sidewalk, which this is probably if they're walking, which I just mentioned to Bob, is you have elderly people. And if you start putting these sidewalks through all these drives, you have to worry about this old person backing into this old person walking.
Well, I'm, I'm not concerned about a sidewalk through here. I get it. Okay? I get it. I'm concerned that they don't have access to this sidewalk or that there's not a sidewalk here to get to.
Well, and-
Go ahead.
And you're, what you're saying is has a lot of meaning. But if they were to come just to get exercise on this section, they would be doing the exact same thing, except it wouldn't be elderly people necessarily living in these homes because these sidewalks run right through the middle of people's driveways too.
You mean on this side?
Yes, ma'am.
And I'll tag on to that, just because there isn't a sidewalk here?
I mean, they could be walking down the road and the same thing happened.
And the problem with that is if there is a sidewalk, it makes people be more vigilant to look out for pedestrians who are walking on that sidewalk. Where if there isn't a sidewalk, the person that's backing out is going to say, well, I have, they may say, I have more of a right to be here and not be so vigilant to consider pedestrians. And it's a dead end road. And so what you're going to have is the people that are coming in here, that live here, are going to be going a whole lot faster down this road than those that live up here.
We could add additional sidewalks to get to here.
But there's, there are also studies that are, the passenger, as you walk, as, as you walk on the sidewalk, you do not pay as much attention to your surroundings. As there's a crosswalk, you do not pay as much attention to your surroundings, if you have to walk across a road without a crosswalk. As a pedestrian, now, as a driver, it makes you look, as a pedestrian, you're not.
Paying as much attention.
It goes both ways. Which is why pedestrians always.
Sense of security, is that what you're saying?
Not thinking about it.
Right, so like you have a overs, there's, there's studies done that if I put a crosswalk, I feel safe walking across, so I'm not looking left or right before I walk. Where the car realizes that it has to stop, but if you don't put a crosswalk there, then it's making the pedestrians pay a little bit more attention as well. But I'm not saying there shouldn't be sidewalks, but.
I just think it's also.
I do think.
The look at the fact that some elderly people struggle with acknowledging their surroundings in general. And an opportunity to get them off of the road, I think, has a lot of meaning. They still have the option to get out and exercise and enjoy life and enjoy our beautiful little town. I, I personally feel like having a sidewalk would be a safer option for them, I understand what you're saying, and it makes a lot of sense.
I mean, it goes both ways.
Yes, I do, I, I, I agree a hundred percent, it goes both ways. I also just feel like we have set a precedence in the town of requiring sidewalks in our other neighborhoods, and I don't. I don't feel like this falls under any different.
Okay, is that, when that come out here?
I don't either.
Is there a gate here, an access gate, or is it open?
It doesn't.
Because you said it was a gated community, does that consider it?
This is their property.
That is open, okay, yeah, it's considered gated because there's a gate, what?
Yeah, and so you can't come through, like.
Which will attach here, which.
And they can drive in.
But, I mean, after you do it a couple times, you're going to realize you can't get out, and then probably not do that.
Still not safe. She put a sign here that says private drive.
Drop the sidewalk, because that's.
I would hope so.
Yeah, because someone, someone who makes a mistake and goes this way, and then gets down to the end, it's going to be ticked off. And they're going to back in and turn around, and they're going to fly through here, ticked off.
Bob, can I ask you a question, and I apologize that I don't know the answer, why are we putting a gate on Lovers Lane?
We.
Oh, not wait, why, why is that proposed? Who can answer that question? Why was it proposed that there would be a gate?
I think some concern was with this being a senior living development, if people living in Car and Circle start taking this road, there's going to be a lot more traffic going through there than the elderly people.
Then.
Because they can just cut through Lovers instead of having to go down, down past the apartments to get in here.
You should have a gate here with a code.
May I propose?
It's private.
Private streets.
This is private streets. It's not a city street.
They're not dedicating them to the public, so the public would not have a right to use.
Well, that's why I asked the question, are you going to have a sign here that says private drive?
I don't know if they would have to if they have a gate, but that's.
Well, my, my point that I made was, if somebody turns down this road thinking they can go someplace else, and they go all the way down past all four of these buildings, they get to the other end and it's gated and they can't get out, then they're probably not going to be happy, and they're going to back up, turn around and fly out. Not cool, why, in my.
Since this already went to the Planning Commission and was approved, do we have the opportunity to propose changes to this plan?
Yes.
Yes.
Under ten, thirteen, two. Just the section on PUDs.
Can I say something while you're thinking?
Go ahead.
I'm thinking.
Another thing I would. Are the driveways deep enough to place a sidewalk and not obstruct it with the cars?
Well, that was my question, Bob, given this space, it doesn't look like it, so what I was going to propose is that we put a gate with a passcode entrance or like a clicker. For this community, so that only the people that live within this community should be in that community, and then I agree with the reasoning of, you don't want to run your neighbor over, you're going to be a little bit more careful, we're not going to have somebody who accidentally turns down Carnes thinking that they can get through, um, and it, it would be safer, uh, it's. I would, I would love for there to be sidewalks, however, there is only four acres and that's a lot of units, so I think the best course of action would it, would be for it to be an actually enclosed gated community for elderly residential residents.
I agree with that, and then it takes out my sentiment about not having, about them using the street, if the street is closed, I'm not worried as much about through traffic.
Right.
Right, because it's going to be just the neighbors.
Exactly.
Just your neighbors that you're concerned with, but what. I am not an engineer and I don't build things, so what are, do anybody else have any thoughts?
I still think access to sidewalks on the.
The side?
Yeah, would be very, very important to me.
On where?
To the east.
Yes.
To Lovers Lane, a connection.
Possible sidewalks to gain access to the side, to the sidewalk running north, south.
I just feel like that gives a lot of freedom to someone, should they choose to want to use that asphalt sidewalk for even more exercise.
You could potentially do the same thing on the west, just come up north.
How far can we request that they put sidewalk, that this builder builds sidewalks?
On his property.
All the way on his property, I like that idea. I think that the people of Carnes Street.
I can't remember, but I think there's a sidewalk here. But I can't remember.
Off of Carnes, I believe so too, just to that first, end of that first lot, I think so.
I have a vote in section seven, Carnes.
I, I'm totally for, go to gate, I mean, I mentioned it while going, so I'm, I'm totally for.
Only question I have about that, I think it's a great idea, but the only question I have is fire code.
I don't know about that, what does that mean? What are the implications of that?
Well, the fire trucks have to be able to get in and out.
How do they do it in other?
I mean, the back gate is going to have to have a code on it anyways, so they would just have to, the fire station would just have to know the code or have a clicker, this program.
Well, you, great point, because you might have some ambulances visiting there.
I'm sure you will, if it's.
Right.
Which that puts. Anything that requires us to be a senior?
Not technically, besides that is our developers' market.
It's very lively tonight.
We live in the Amazon. Can I just give you a little bit of the.
Yes, please.
Parameters on a, on a PUD. A PUD is an overlay, over your zoning district, that, sometimes, this is very broad, but it's basically a supplement for plat, rather than plating, or rather than, um, just building what they can build on this. They're trying to build something that, that requires some modifications from the zoning code, so they come under, come to you with Plan Unit Development, Plan Commission come to you. There's a couple of sections in the code that are relevant, I think, to your, your discussions, probably, one is section ten dash thirteen dash twelve, um, contributions may be required, it says the city, the city commission as part of the approval of a PUD shall be permitted to require an applicant to make reasonable contributions to include but not, but not limited to any combination of the following, and it goes through a list, um, I'm just going to have you, ask you to take my word for it, that it would cover these sidewalks. The other thing that you should know about PUDs is under fourteen, twelve. And ten, fourteen, two, um, it's the general language, there, uh, you have a lot of freedom under a PUD to determine whether it's really in the city's interest, and it says, this is what it says. These regulations are established to permit latitude in the development of the building site, if such development is found to be in accordance with the purpose, spirit and intent of this title, the zoning code. And is found not to be hazardous, harmful, offensive or otherwise adverse to the environment property values, or the character of the neighborhood, or the health, safety and welfare of the community. It is intended to permit and encourage diversification, vari- variation and imagination in the relationship of uses, structures, open spaces and heights of structures for developments conceived and implemented as comprehensive and cohesive unified projects. Um, it's further intended to encourage more rational and economic development with relationships to public services and to encourage and facilitate the preservation of open lands. So, basically, if you feel that the, this particular application needs those requirements, um, then you, if you need to approve it, but you can also, um. Determine that perhaps not having a sidewalk would be adverse to, would be hazardous, harmful, offensive or otherwise adverse to the environment.
I also think it, it adds, not having the sidewalks at, uh, what is it, um, is harmful or negatively impacts property values. Because there needs to be sidewalks on this west side of that property.
We don't know that, and you don't have a property values, don't ever take your hat on negatively affecting property values without evidence, and I will talk to you guys about that at some point, we don't know.
No, we don't, we don't know, but it's a possibility, and I'm concerned about it.
And you've got broad, broad latitudes, yeah. I know, we're sorry.
It's risky.
It's risky, no, I just, I think that.
So, I'm saying, I think you're fine, if, but one of the things that you, you could do, um, you can make, you could approve it subject to certain requirements. But the engineer may want to see if they can comply with those requirements. So the engineer could withdraw their application tonight and go back and think about what they want to do.
What was that code, thirteen what?
Um, so I think our intention and our understanding was, you're going to have a senior living, it's probably, if it's, there are only one bedroom, I think a couple of them have two bedroom for office purpose. So if you have a single family, more likely they only have one car, you're going to park it in the garage, they can come out the garage, go down the drive. Should there be a sidewalk to Lovers or Carnes? Sure, we can make those provisions, and I believe in the developer's good faith that he would be willing to do that. Now, is that something I'm still going to have to go get approved by the developer? Yes, because I'm not paying for it, but I think that would be, I think he'd be reasonable with that.
What about the gate to the Car and Circle entrance?
I don't know the answer to that question, I mean, I can, I can always propose it and ask, and, you know, if for some reason the developer's not willing to do that, then we could bring it back, but if we want to put those in provisions and approve it tonight, and then I can get it back to Bob, and as long as those two things check out, then good to go. But I do know, there, as you've seen, there's brick on site and he is ready to roll, so. And I, I don't think that he, sidewalks is going to stop him from doing the project, and I'm, I can't a hundred percent say that he's not planning to put a gate there anyways, he just wasn't given to me at the beginning of the project.
Well, I think that my name, I think it's just going to be.
I wouldn't sign it till we have a final.
I, I want. I, commissioners, we, we want sidewalks all over our city right now, that's what, that's what we're promoting in our city, we want our city to be accessible to all. And all means all, and this is not, and I like it, okay? Don't get me wrong, I love this idea, but I agree with these two ladies that, at the very least, I'd like to see sidewalks over here, I'd like to see access to these sidewalks, and I could live without a gate, but I want a gate.
I guess.
Is that good wording?
So I think. Does it have to be referenced to code? And is there a determination on city code now on what side the sidewalk needs to be on? Or one side or both sides, or?
Well, if it's called a minor street, it'd be on one side.
But this is, this is a private street.
So they could.
But we're not talking on this.
So it could be, that could be determined by them.
I don't think it's reference, I don't think it is referenced to city code, I think it's, it's a condition of.
By the commission. So whatever they.
And, yeah, not, we're not talking about sidewalks in, on the private street.
Okay.
We're talking about the property that is owned on the west side of this development, that's off of Carnes Street and Car and Circle, so there'll be sidewalks there, down there.
Well, not really north and south, but that also means I'm going to have to put one east and one west along my drive in order for them to get there.
Or I guess they would come straight through the road and go up the right.
Yes, that's, yes, because if the gate is there, then we feel like it's a safer option.
And maybe if we had some kind of access gate, pedestrian access to gate two here.
Yeah, I mean, that could even be locked as well, I mean, with a code, um, but, yeah, the, the, not the sidewalks, because I don't think there is enough space, and I agree with you, these are, you know, so close together that you'd have like these tiny little things, a sidewalk, so you'd actually be walking like this or rolling like this, and nobody wants that.
Nobody has bubble tires on their walkers.
But if it's going to be a gated community within city limits, then it needs to be a truly gated community and not a dead end that causes potentially a lot of da- dangerous situations for an elderly community that's down there on that road.
I mean, and you're.
We've learned it all about other public people walking through this.
Well, that's what, I'm sorry, Carla, I didn't.
No, I was just going to say, you're, you're putting in a gate, a coded gate here, right, same code, here. And emergency management, and Bob should have that code.
And I feel like.
Sorry.
I feel like if there is a gate on both sides, it will deter children, one of mine on his bicycle, to go down that street and potentially harm elderly people who might be out walking or exercising. I think having a gate on both sides is a very important, because it does, it will keep that traffic off of that, I think, a bit more. So, yes, that is a concern to me as well.
Yeah, personally, I would not put an elder in my family in a gated, in a, in a half gated community that dead ends into a neighborhood with hundreds of homes, I wouldn't do it. So how do we, like, propose this or motion this, or what do we do?
I think we can approve it with.
Conditions.
You have to sign it.
With the conditions.
I think I'd recommend getting the conditions on the paper.
You can have that.
That's illegal.
How about I just pull it and I'll bring it back? So then I have to go back through Planning Commission? It's already signed by Planning Commission, that. Or can we get an agreement for construction to start? I guess, probably don't want to do that either, okay.
I don't, I don't.
Okay, problem is. It needs to go back through Planning Commission, but can they stand, if the Planning Commission prefers something? Yeah, I think that Planning Commission, Planning Commission could still sign PUD as long as it was them and the commission.
I don't think it needs to go back through Planning Commission, but I.
You just need to come back here and.
It needs to come back here, and it needs to come back with the sidewalks drawn on and ready to be dedicated.
And the gate.
And, and the ga, and the condition of the gate, yeah, the gate, I don't know if that actually has to be drawn on, or if that's truly a condition of the. Yeah, it would be, you draw it on the same way you drew on the back one, so, so a gate. This is a minor change, could I ask that maybe we come back to the special meeting that you have in a week?
I was getting ready to, that special meeting is actually two and a half weeks away. Do we?
It would only save you one week.
Can we, yeah. It will only save you one.
I mean, these are just really minor changes, I could make these tomorrow.
Okay, so my question is to staff, can we have a short special meeting? Here in the very near future?
Thursday.
In September?
I don't have any, I know we've been trying to keep special meetings one topic, but I don't have a problem putting this on a special meeting.
She may not want to wait that long.
Timmy, would, would you be available, I'm just asking her first, Timmy, would you be available to come to a special meeting on this Thursday?
I can't make it this Thursday.
Uh, we don't have posting.
Oh, we don't have posting time, it's Tuesday.
A posting time.
Oh, sorry, I thought it was Monday.
I could do a seven thirty after the quarter, just.
I can't make it Thursday.
No, I'm kidding, no, we don't.
I could do the twenty seventh.
Well, you wouldn't have to necessarily be here, because we'd have a court if it was with me, but.
I don't, I.
I could do the twentieth, I'd cancel softball for this.
I just don't see the point in making another special meeting for this, when we have a special meeting ready to go, I just, I mean, it feels redundant to me, it feels, I, it, to me, it just feels redundant. I mean, we could just simply add it. I mean, we could just simply add it. So, if they've done what they, what we've asked them to do, it's a simple look at it, yay, let's go, move on.
At our next social meeting?
Yeah, to me, it, to me, it's not.
I'm good with that too. I was just trying to accommodate.
My only concern is my developer has brick on site, like, I believe he'll still be there. No, but I believe he has people ready to start work. Literally like Thursday is my understanding after this meeting, which that's not on you, that's on him, but.
Can.
I hate that for him and I hate that for his employees. I truly do. My husband's in construction and I know how much of a fine that's in, but.
If we all agree.
I mean.
That's fine. I was trying to propose earlier, Bob would wanna take that on or?
That we have to have a meeting. If they.
I thought we could approve it.
The conditions, you'd have to sign it.
Then if they come back with the conditions, the way we make, it's just a moot point. Yes.
You'd have to sign it.
Call me and to sign it. I'll come in and sign it.
You have to sign it tonight. You have to sign it tonight.
Sign it till they get, what, ask for, not doing that.
Essentially from there.
I mean, they've called me before to sign things.
It can't, well, power that way, so there would have to be a, some kind of sidewalk.
Can we approve it with conditions subject to, we're gonna need seeing like an updated contract or updated skid or whatever that's called. Or signature, I mean, it's not.
I, I don't know how to write this as a condition. It's just gonna have to be direct reading. No, thank you. This is a quandary. So, we're gonna need to table this and, or decline it and then have them redraw it and come back.
I, I would suggest that because drafting the motion that would make this work cause, could cause some ambiguity. I, I just think it makes a whole lot more sense just to bring it back to go. Regarding senior concerns.
I really don't like doing that to you. It's just, these things are, I mean.
I'm just, I'm just the middle man.
I know, but I hate.
Just send the message.
I do very much hate it for you. Those are just things that are very important to me, so.
What are the conditions that you wanna see on it?
We wanna see a sidewalk walkway with gated pedestrian access on Lover's Lane on both sides, north and south. And we wanna see sidewalks on the property to the west, on the development to the west, on Karn Street and Karn Circle with pedestrian access there as well and a gated passcode gate on the west side of the property.
Did you get all that, Jean?
No, there's a recording.
And we've got a recording.
I, I agree with Commissioner Futh, but at the same time, I'm still willing to call a special meeting on the twentieth. Come in, come in for, and get it taken care of. And I'd be losing, I'd be losing umpire money to do that. I really would. I'd be losing a hundred and twenty dollars. But if that helps our community, I'm willing to do it.
How are you gonna comply with ADA, put a sidewalk from here to here?
I'm thinking I'm gonna have to put one in here.
Sidewalk attached to the street.
Commissioner.
Move your gate.
My gate is here. But I put like a pedestrian beside gate.
I just remind you, I cost money.
No, that's what I said.
What'd you say? Just remind you that I cost money.
So, if we call it and a special meeting, Tammy has to come in, we'll have to pay.
Okay.
And I love this role, but I have other things in my life going. And if we're already making special meetings, that's great, but.
I totally agree with you.
Is there something to do it on the fourth?
I think that would be prudent. That's my opinion, but I.
After having said that about the October twentieth meeting, that really will hopefully give the company time to solidify and not just jump into something. Totally think through it and plan it. We got to see it. Tammy, what, what is our, what's our next point right here? We need to.
Someone needs to make a motion to table it to a meeting cert. They don't have to renotice everything.
And the commission, or the conditions are not.
No, I don't.
No.
They need a record of what they want to see and if they don't see it, then we don't see it. So, just a motion to table this to whatever meeting date.
Just give it October fourth.
Everybody will agree to.
October fourth. I'll make a motion that we table agenda item number eighteen. The Lover's Lane Senior Living Development Center or Development according to our specifications to special meeting on October fourth. Is that somewhere?
I mean, we can.
Jean, you get that?
I second.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Make a motion for a brief.
I won't bail for your potty.
Could I get a second before I get out?
I got a second, yeah.
You wanna vote on it?
I guess, yes.
Orla? No, we don't need to vote on it.
Risky, yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. I appreciate you.
We are in recess.
We'll bring cookies. Tammy will, Tammy will.
October fourth and cookies right now.
I paused it.
I don't know how to do that.
Wait. I don't know if it'll start back up without us going back over.
Then you're still lying.
Just sit quietly and ponder what just happened.
How about those grapes?
Where are you going there, Tammy?
I don't know. I was trying to think. I'm so not sports. Like, I wanted, I started to say Broncos and like, yeah, they don't care.
But I get, well, she gets it too. She's from Colmo. I live there. I get it. I don't wanna watch them.
Anybody wanna mint?
The queen died.
That was sad.
Boomerang mints.
Get to eat dinner before meetings.
She did. Saw a lot of change in her life. She just stayed the same all the time.
Imagine how different her life would be if her uncle hadn't made the choices he made.
I know.
Just one person's decisions reshaped her entire life.
In the whole country.
Oh, yeah.
Absolutely.
Really significantly positive ways.
Probably, yes. Her, her uncle had some interesting connections.
Okay, I, I got the commission meeting on my calendar and now I'm going back and adding cookies.
After you into cookies?
No, don't plan.
Plan on it. Yeah, denied.
Talk about me while it's going on.
My baking time.
Yeah, that's exactly right.
We get to put in.
Ask her for a lot of grace.
No, of course not.
She wants the cookies up twenty-five percent.
As much food as I've gotten here, I ate my snacks earlier.
Are we ready to go, Jean? Establish your quorum.
I do that every time.
I never, no.
She's, I'm worse than her on that.
We've got a quorum. Go ahead.
Ready? Okay, item agenda number nineteen. Consideration, discussion and possible action to approve application for justice assistance. Grant local law enforcement for computers and computer equipment for the police department in the amount of nine thousand eight hundred eighty-five dollars and eighty-three cents.
This is the grant that I was thrilled that Kyle Howard took on and wrote it and it's for computer and computer equipment for the PD.
So, my notes on this say yes. And they say, thank Howard. So, I want you, please, please personally thank him from me. He did a really good job and I text you the other night and said, I just couldn't believe that you didn't already have a laptop accessible to you and staff to take where you needed, so yes on this, sorry. Any discussion?
I just appreciate the initiative on his part.
Yes, I do.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
You guys have to get better at that.
The mayor, the mayor. You have any?
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Sarah.
Just for the record, a tie does not automatically go to the runner in the real book.
Just this is the pretty.
You guys are fun. Younger, younger. Item agenda number twenty. Consideration, discussion and possible action to approve resolution twelve dash twenty-two allocating and expending six thousand eight hundred twenty-one and sixteen hundred dollars of the city's, oh goodness, my goodness, one million eight hundred thousand general obligation bonds series two thousand nineteen with the purpose of replacing the walking trail bridge located at the southwest corner of the Peters Park in the city of Perkins, Oklahoma.
This is the money we have left over from the bond issue. This would be an approved expense. Dave Floyd, finance attorney, wrote the resolution. It would basically allow us to close out the bond issue and put this money towards the walking trail repair. The Peters Park. So, we'd save a little money on the other end.
I, I only have, I'm sorry to interrupt you, Bob. I only have one question on that and that is, well, our, I know that a walking bridge is gonna require an engineer. Will our city engineer be able to engineer that or?
It's not actually, it's gonna be a land bridge.
Yep, okay. I've seen those.
Yeah, so it's just culverts, compacted dirt, sidewalk across.
That the answer is yes.
So.
Well, it's already not, well, it's done. It was done by the.
It was already done, okay.
So, if in the near future or in the future, if someone wanted to donate supplies and their labor to build a bridge.
Then we need an engineer.
Would that be possible in the future?
Yes.
Over the land, okay. Thank you. Commissioners, any questions?
I make a motion that we approve resolution twelve twenty-two.
Second.
Mayor.
Yes.
Autumn.
Yes, ma'am. Sarah.
Yes, Justin.
Yes.
See how I did that? Bless your heart, Justin. Consideration, discussion and possible action to approve application for Transportation Alternatives Program Grant TAP from Oklahoma Department of Transportation or ODOT. Sidewalks connecting schools with community services.
I have to give a huge shout out to Amy Peterman. She was here and then she barely had to leave.
Oh, it's a tour.
It's, uh, this would, what we're planning on doing on this grant is applying for sidewalks to connect the schools. So, it'd be different Thomas Street from the middle school all the way down to Timberline and then north to connect into Peters Park Walking Trail, which connects to the elementary school, which connects to the intermediate school.
That is fantastic. Thank you, Dave.
Does it include that section of sidewalk that you and I have discussed in the past about keeping kids out of the parking lot at the elementary and intermediate school? Do you know?
I'm not sure what you mean.
A while back, remember I gave you a picture?
Oh, yes. No, it does not include that. This, this project would be, it's roughly six hundred and eighty thousand dollars and it would stop basically where the land bridge is going in where the, at Peters Park. Because then you could take that hoop around, so it does not include that.
I was just hoping it was.
It's a huge step forward.
Yes, it is, it is.
Huge step forward.
Very excited about it.
And I also wanna give a shout out to Chairman Wallace. Representative Wallace, that's the chairman of the Appropriations Committee in Oklahoma City. His office called and they're doing a letter of support for the grant for us.
Wow.
Unsolicited.
That is fantastic.
Absolutely.
I appreciate it.
So, what we're asking for is approval to apply.
I make a motion for approval for application for the TAP program. Sidewalks connecting schools with communities.
Second.
Can't have all of them.
Mayor?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. Sarah.
Yes, Justin.
Yes.
Item agenda twenty-two. Consideration, discussion and possible action to review letters of interest and select candidate for Perkins Industrial Development Authority Trust. Person open appointed trustee position, term ending April thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
We have nothing.
I asked someone and was declined.
Do we need to make a motion to continue to advertise?
I don't, I don't like Commissioner Bello. I don't wanna give up, but it's a little frustrating sometimes with.
Can, can we just make a motion to keep it posted on the website that we are continuing to look for candidates for this trust position and? Possible action.
To review letters of interest.
Wanted to read what I wanted to read. Wanted to interpret it my way.
But I have a feeling that Rachel will probably do what you were thinking about.
She's awesome.
Of course she is. She's funny.
Ladies. No action.
Item number twenty-three. Consideration, discussion and possible action to review letters of interest and select a candidate for Perkins Library Trust. An open trustee position with term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
I'm surprised by that. I was informed that there was someone that was interested in that position and so I was.
Who, you know who it was, okay, so.
Linda Borden.
She's resigning.
She's resigning off of the library. Library board. Because it was my understanding that she was interested in taking the position.
I really hope she hasn't sent me anything.
I don't know that she has done that. That's why I was just saying, I was surprised that something hasn't taken place yet. Is what I was getting, I was wanting them to know. Cannot reach her. Oh, she might be out of the state at the moment, so that might be why we don't have any communications. But it was my understanding that she was very interested in that position, so.
We can bring it back next month.
Absolutely.
No action? Okay, item agenda number twenty-four, new business. Under the Open Meeting Act, this agenda item is authorized only for matters not known about or which could have been reasonably foreseen prior to the time of voting the agenda or any revised agenda. Five. Make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
The regularly scheduled commission meeting. Yes.
Yes, ma'am. Sarah. I'm too hungry for all this, Autumn.
Okay, Public Works Authority Agenda. Regular meeting September thirteenth, twenty twenty-two. It was supposed to start at six P M, but no.
Just slightly behind schedule, just slightly behind schedule.
Call the order, roll call, and establish a quorum.
Uh, Mayor.
Yes.
Autumn. Yes, ma'am.
Sarah.
Yes.
Justin.
Yes.
Consideration, action on consent agenda. Does anyone wanna pull anything out? Commissioners. I'll make a motion that we accept the consent agenda for the Perkins Public Works Authority.
Second.
She's tired, she's a little slow.
Mayor.
Yes.
Autumn. Yes.
Sarah.
Yes.
Justin.
Yes.
Number four, public appearances, petitions, communications, and personal appearances. Under Oklahoma law, the board members are prohibited from discussing or taking any action on items not on today's agenda. That's being no action. Five, consideration, discussion, and possible action to proceed with a long-range sustainability program as presented by Logan Davis with the Oklahoma Rural Water Association.
How are y'all doing?
Hello.
Thank you.
Boy, you sit there.
I've sat longer, I promise. So, it's ten thirty before, so.
Oh, bless your heart, thanks for.
Are you Mr. Davis?
Yes, ma'am.
Before you start, can I say something?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much for your service, sir.
I appreciate it. I never know how to act when people say that. Still feels new to me.
Now, you know what? Comes from my heart.
Thank you.
Okay. Go ahead, sir.
So, are you guys familiar with us at all, what O R W A does, before I get in on this, start talking your ear off?
Okay.
I can honestly say I'm not that familiar. A brief synopsis would be.
Okay, so we're a nonprofit funded through the state. Uh, we offer different types of services, be it from training administrative staff on how to do their job as better, to your hands out in the field, to the whole management operations and budget setting. So, full, everything that can be encompassed within a water or wastewater system, we do. So, what the L R S P plan is, basically, uh, D E Q, Water Resources Board, State of Oklahoma, and O R W A have created a strategic alliance through funding with, from D E Q and Governor Stitt, and it's pretty much a program, and all we do is we come in, look at the way you guys are doing things, um, which I'll kinda touch on, and then we're gonna make recommendations based on that. And then, for some systems, you know, we bring you guys, or probably not you guys from what I've seen, but we help bring systems into the twenty-first century. As you know, I've been to some systems and they haven't changed rates since nineteen ninety-nine. So, you know, there's some things, you know, we should do better than others. Um, so, there's no cost to this at all, other than to complete the program, you have to have an up-to-date hydraulic analysis type of your system. So, that's, that's the only cost involved. Um, we have a grant at the moment, it's our R I G grant, you can find it on our website to look at. D E Q's given us ten million dollars to give away over the next twelve months, a hundred thousand dollars at a time, it's an eighty-twenty match. So, scenarios, let's say you guys wanna buy six miles of water line, and then you're gonna have a contractor install it. We would do eighty percent, so we could fund up to eighty thousand dollars of that project. Now, if you guys are gonna go ask for a hundred thousand dollars to buy some new meters and some heavy equipment, then you guys get the full hundred thousand dollars because it's not getting contracted out, it's your system's doing everything, you're installing it type of thing, so it would be fully funded. And, simple application, I've already given it to Bob, so if you guys have any questions on that, just holler at me on that. But as far as the L R S P program, which, by participating in this program, it can give you guys preference points on your grant application. So, it's kind of, it's nice, um, just 'cause it goes, we're, we're the one giving the grant out, it's funded by D E Q, we're doing this with D E Q type of thing, so and it's kinda proven already, the systems that complete this program, they, they're in a lot better positions when we start. We come back a couple of years later and they're still in better positions. Um, and everything that we offer on here, once we complete it, it's not the end of our relationship. If you want us to come back and do it again each year, we can. Just a matter of giving us a call. Um, so, I'll start with, um, we do a capacity development worksheet, which is developed by D E Q. It's about a hu, two hundred and fifty-question questionnaire, and it's gonna score the way you guys run your water, wastewater system.
Mr. Arns answers that, correct, or who answers those questions?
Um, so that, that, yeah, that would be personnel, yeah, it would be city staff, for the most part, um, pretty much everything, it's gonna be city staff, other than, uh, the rate analysis, which I'll touch on. Um, so, we'll go through there, give you guys a score, and then what that's gonna do is kinda find the deficiencies in the way you operate your system.
Okay.
Uh, you know, it can come off a little negative sometimes if a system's not doing well, or it can come off really positive to see that you guys are already on, on the ball type of thing. Um, but it's a point of improvement, so it's a good one. Uh, we do water loss audits, so we'll, we'll pretty much audit the way you guys sell, produce, uh, purchase water, and then figure out exactly what your real apparent and, uh, in-ground losses are. So, you know, are we losing two hundred thousand gallons a year because we're reading meters wrong, or because we have bad meters? Or are we losing an extra two hundred thousand gallons because of the stream of errors, or is it actually being lost in the ground? There's multiple ways we can lose water, you know, are we tracking what the fire department uses, things like that.
So, would you be checking like, things like how we're losing groundwater or?
Yeah, so, so if you guys, let's just throw a random number out there, let's say you produce ten million gallons a year, but you're only selling six. We gotta figure out where that four million gallons of water went. Or in cases, if you're a purchase system and you're buying your water, you're gonna, you're gonna feel it a lot more because, you know, you pay for every thousand gallons, type of thing. Um, and after that, we, um, we do leak detection, so we have crew, that's all they do is they go around and find water that's been lost in ground. And I think to date, it's just over a billion now, billion gallons of water that we've found across the state of Oklahoma. We're trying to get a dog, to get a dog to come do water, uh, search for water, 'cause you can train them to smell the quarry, so.
That's awesome.
So, I hate to interrupt you, but I wanna ask Bob a question, so would this help with some of the groundwater loss that we're having that's causing, causing some erosion?
Well, no, not. I don't think so.
Okay.
'Cause the water loss he's talking about is water coming out of our pipes.
Okay.
And I think that's groundwater getting into a drainage system.
Okay, all right, thank you very much. Go ahead, sir.
The weather leak detection crew goes, you know, if they come out here for three days and you guys are good, then they're done. If it takes them three weeks, they're gonna find a hotel nearby, and they're gonna stay in the area, and they're gonna come back every single day, and they're gonna, they're gonna continue to work with crews, train them on how to identify these things. Um, you know, if you have sewage leaks, look for hornets in the woods, they like, they like that, it's, it's got a lot of content in it. Um, you know, cows, frogs, you'll see them in fields if you have big water loss, they'll start to hang out in certain areas, you know. You see a bunch of birds in an area, there's no dead animals, odds are there's a lot of water somewhere on the ground that's being leaked out. Um, so, the one that I try to, when I do them, everybody at O R W A does these a little bit different, um, it's all standardized, so it's the same end result, it's just our processes are a little bit different, so we do rate analysis. So, what we're gonna do is we're gonna calculate your affordability index, which is gonna be your cost of a five thousand gallon water bill divided by monthly median household income for your area times one hundred, and that's gonna give us a representation of how expensive your water is. So, for example, if you're a one point oh, affordable water, if you're below that, you have really cheap water. Above that, your water's a little more expensive. If you get above a two point oh, you can qualify for special considerations on USDA, uh, rural development grants. So, they'll help you guys upgrade your infrastructure, for example, so that way you can get the cost of water back down. Sometimes when we do a rate analysis, we might end up at a one point nine eight, purposely try to push you guys over to a two point oh. Isn't much, it's a one to two percent difference generally on, on rates. Um, but, and then we also, what I try to do is I try to, you know, talk with the hands that are doing the work, seeing what they need, or, you know, are they burnt out because they haven't had a raise in six years, or do they need a piece of equipment, you know, what can we do to make their lives better? So, when we're doing that, what we do is we look at your last twelve months of water sales, production, exactly what it costs to run the system. Um, you know, you guys may sell water for, it's called three dollars and forty cents for, for a thousand gallons, but after the cost of doing everything, it might cost you guys seven dollars and fifty cents to produce that thousand gallons, so you guys are losing money. Everyone, for example, those are like the hidden costs that you don't typically see when looking at rates. Um, and we'll, you know, it's a full presentation just like this, except a little bit longer. But, that.
You mean after Rachel gives us a twenty-five point? So, I do have a question real quick for you.
Yes, ma'am.
So, updating the hy- hydraulic system?
Do hydraulic analysis?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, ma'am.
What does that entail?
Okay, so you'll give an engine.
What is our, like, what would that cost be?
Okay, so it varies.
Okay.
You know, a small town, they might have an eight thousand dollar ticket, so you're gonna have to have an engineer. Um, sounds like you guys already got that from earlier, so that's good, that's usually the first step. Um.
We have a hydraulic analysis in twenty-six, we looked at it, twenty sixteen, I think.
And if it's up to date, it meets the requirements, it could be applicable, and you guys won't even have to do a new one. If you guys haven't had much growth since then, you haven't added many, haven't added much to the, the water system's needs. Be that from, you know, since twenty sixteen, there's been a lot that have changed, you know, we have medical marijuana now, there's a lot of grow operations in areas, that's different strain on a system. Um, so there's a lot of things to consider when, you know, what's affecting your hydrox, like your system. But typically, what I see is about between eight and twenty-five thousand dollars. Uh, big towns gonna be twenty-five, small towns gonna be closer to eight, so it really varies on the length, how many miles of water line you have within your system. That's the greatest, uh, impact on that factor.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Um, any questions on rate analysis before I move on? Think about that. Which, these are all recommendations too, whenever we come through and we do these things, just because we say, hey, you guys should raise your, raise your water maybe, or, you know, if you're good, you don't have to. You can just look at how you guys can set money aside for better use in the future for your water system. It's all gonna be voted on by you guys, nothing's forced, so it's all, you guys still have full control of all that.
So, would this be a separate, um, meeting?
Yeah, so, so, yeah, so that one would be a formal presentation.
Okay.
That's really the only formal presentation of all these. All these, we're just gonna come to your town, spend time here, work with your people. Um, other than the rate analysis, that's gonna be the one where we're gonna come back to you guys. Um, so we do energy audits as well, so we're gonna go look at your buildings, we're gonna look at what AC systems you're using, lighting systems, we're gonna look at what motors are on your wells. You know, we're gonna see, do you guys, for example, you guys don't have V F D motors on your wells, that means when you turn them on, they run a hundred percent all the time. So, by doing something like that, you can save about five thousand dollars over the course of about five years in energy costs, just because, and it's putting less wear and tear on your motor, so you're gonna get a long. Which, that, that's just a common one I, I find, so that's just my example.
Sarcasm's kidding.
And that's through our national program, so we have, we have someone, all they do, all they do is go into energy audits, they're gonna look, you know, when we're at the well houses, if we can see daylight when we close the door, that's an issue, because you get, you get insects, which bring rodents, which bring snakes, and all of a sudden, you guys have, you know.
I'm out.
One two hundred thousand dollar bill, 'cause one of your works, it's a bit, you know, antivenom.
See, I was gonna ask if I could, like, walk around and watch some of that, but you mentioned snakes, I'm out.
Oh, we hardly ever see them.
See Amazon.
Well, yeah, no, and if you guys wanna be involved, we always definitely.
Just out of curiosity and knowledge, I mean, I'm.
Yeah, there's a lot of good informa, information to learn in this, uh, process. Uh, we do insurance assessments, uh, let's say you guys bought a city truck five years ago, it does not cost the same amount by, go buy that same truck today. So, we wanna make sure everything's insured of what it cost to replace today, you know, if there's a, you know, you put a water tower fifteen years ago and it's insured for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that's about the cost to just paint one today. So, you know, we just wanna make sure everything's, we need to leave you guys in a good situation if a tornado rips through here or something.
Great.
So, once, this, uh, next one's capital improvement plan, it's gonna be towards the end of the program, and it's gonna be, we're gonna make recommendations at the very end of everything that we found. And we're gonna just, that's what they're gonna be, we're gonna give you a big thick book, and it's gonna have everything that I've talked about in it, um, all the documentation, the process, all our recommendations, and you guys can look at it, and then it'll be looked at by an engineer too. Um, next to is asset management, pretty much, look at all the assets within your system, make sure that they are insured, if they're not. They, it, it happens at the same time as the insurance assessment, so it's a little bit redundant. Um, it's just a little more specific than the insurance assessment. Insurance assessment's gonna be big things. This is gonna look at things like printers, computers, all the smaller, particular objects. Um, the next one is something that I do personally a lot, um, it's kinda my background, is we do G I S services. So, we'll come through, we'll recommend, how many, uh, meters do you have in your system again? I know you told me that.
Fifteen hundred.
Okay, so, an example of what the cost to use this software would be, which is, what I would recommend, would be between twenty and thirty dollars a month to have a subscription to this. It's called Diamond Maps, it's, it's completely tailored to, uh, utility systems, be that electric, gas, or water. And, we're gonna pretty much help you guys build digital maps, that way you guys can know where things are underground. Because paper maps, they don't last long, you gotta take them out in the field, anything like that, boy gets mad, burns them, takes them, steals them, hides them, whatever may happen.
We do have. Digital, you know, we have digital maps, K M Z files in, uh, Google Earth, but this, this system, you would be able to just migrate those in and then verify them, and then, um, we could have iPads or something in the field.
You can do it from a cellphone even.
So, the guys can pull them up in the field, and they can add to them.
Yeah.
And put pictures in, like when they do a repair, they can.
So, if the, you know, if the paper map says the line's eight feet off the east side of the road, and they get out there and it's twelve feet, well, they can go out there with, you know, a GPS device, take that point, and this is, we train them on how to do all of this. If you guys want one person that gets focused training, they get real knowledgeable, if you want group training.
Usually, when it says it's eight foot off the street, it's like right in the middle of the street.
Yeah, we learned that last year.
Or you find it on the other side of the road, and then all of a sudden, you're like, shoot, I need to go to my engineer so he can update my map, or your employees can pull their phone out and make an update on it. If you don't want everyone to have access to that type of thing, you can limit access, we can come in and retrain, help, whatever, whatever the process may be, and we make, we make.
I just have a quick question. Bob, what, what is your opinion on this system? What, what, what is your adva, what?
On this whole thing he's talking about, I am extremely excited about this whole program.
I'm only about two-thirds of the way through, so there's a lot more.
Aside from the, I mean, he said he gets a point on the rig grant, but even if you take the rig grant away.
That's what I needed to hear.
Yeah, and the cool thing with the mapping as well, um, you know, um, I'm working with the town of Calum at, out west towards Honga right now.
Way out there.
Yeah, I, I'm the one that goes out west typically, that's why I'm from, I'm from over in Tuttle. Um, but, no, so there are police departments using, uh, Diamond Maps as well, so that, that, you know, that way they can put, they, they have a lot of elderly people that don't have landlines or cellphones, and they just have to do periodic checks on them, so they're using a layer of the map as well, we got them set up, and I personally trained them, 'cause it's not what we do with O R W A, but so that way, you know, they can just tap it, have a GPS at that person's house, whatever they may, whatever they may need, they have all their critical infrastructure mapped on there. You know, if their water goes down, they can go to various facilities and let them know immediately that depend on that water for day-to-day operations. There's a lot of oil and gas activity out there, it's the crossroads.
So, can I just clarify, this is training our people how to create the maps?
Yes, ma'am.
Is it like maps created from D E Q plans?
This is from everything that you guys know about your system, so whatever publicly available information we can find, along with what you guys have, is what we're gonna use to develop these maps.
It doesn't include the D E Q plan?
No, I mean, if, if, if we can, all those plans, while we're in the process, we can use them if they're.
What we have now includes all of the plans that have been filed with D E Q for construction.
Okay.
Typically, most of those towns' maps will.
That's what you do, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, and the majority of the time, that's what the map systems are using or based off of, 'cause everything's gotta be approved via.
This allows us to go, 'cause it's, you know, when they didn't get as builds, 'cause it'll say one thing and they do another.
So, it's a leaf type system where you're layering, and you can put your, what, every layer you.
Yeah, so you can have one layer that's only gonna have fire, fire hydrants, one layer that'll only have water meters. You can have a layer that's only gonna have water lines. So, it, it's really cool, um. I love building maps, that's, that's my main thing that I do up here. And then, you know, with, with that, um, we'll make recommendations if there's bad, you know, if there's no knowledge right now. I've made a workflow of how to pretty much build maps for a system if you have nothing. So, there's a method to it, and it's just like building a complicated layout set, it's not bad. Um, next thing that we'll do is we'll look at your policies and procedures, um, you know, some towns have a lot more structure than others, so sometimes some of this stuff's not applicable. And if you've already got stuff developed, we'll just rubber stamp it after we look at it, make sure everything's kinda modernized and up to date, and, uh, we're going, but with the policies and procedures, um, a lot of what that's gonna look like is like, some systems, you know, they'll like to give a lot of people E and see if they're not paying their bills, they'll give them three months. You know, if it's me doing it, I'm not gonna recommend that, I'm gonna give, you know, one chance, and then kick them off and make them pay their, their membership cost again. Um, you know, don't, don't do payment plans, things like that. Um, and it's, that one's really tailored to each individual system. We know we have generalized templates too that you guys can look at, if you like it. You can throw your names on there, update how you feel cor, uh, how you feel is necessary. Um, the next one we would do is standard operating procedures, so, you know, if you got a hand out there and he wins the lottery, he's not coming back to work tomorrow at all. He's gonna, he's going down to Cancun, he's retiring, so, you know, if he was the only person that knew how to do his job, or parts of his job, or say it's part of the billing cycle. or say it's part of the billing cycle, we want to have that documented. That way, you know, if, you know, your administrative clerk's out for the day, because he or she is sick, you got to have one of your hands coming in and running the office. There'll be documentation there showing, all right, this is what, this is what has to happen. This is what's going to be done. Here's the step-by-step process on how to run bills, or anything like that.
We have that, but he'll, I mean.
Yeah, and if it's applicable, it's applicable, and if it's not, we can just kind of move on from it type of thing.
We have that because Rachel is awesome.
Rachel is awesome. Rachel, Rachel's awesome.
Captain Obvious over there.
I'm guessing Rachel's awesome.
I don't know.
The next, I would assume a town you guys outside already has them, but we can, I hope you guys set up an emergency response plan. We have one, just plain old documents. We have one that's a little visually more eye appealing. So you know, if you guys want to throw your information on there, set you up on that, and get you a digital and a paper copy of your plan, so you know. Someone's on your website and they see something crazy, they can go click on your guys' emergency response plan, and have every single point of contact that they need within your city, county, and state. The next is sooner warn. Are you guys familiar with that at all?
I actually have heard about it.
Okay, so it's a mutual aid agreement. I'll give you an example of a time it was used that I know of. I believe it was over in Okema, and they were working on a six-inch main. They cut it open because it had rot. And when they cut it, they didn't realize that upstream of them, there was a farmer garden hose and a 500-gallon vat of fertilizer, and they stuffed 500 gallons of chemicals into their water system, and they were out of water for two weeks because it just tainted everything. And the first thing they did was they called, they rang, they hit the red button with sooner warn. And you know, they had, they were tied into another system. That system opened up emergency access, towns started bringing them water, everything like that. And those things, and it's beneficial for if you guys need help, or if someone near you guys needs help. So, and it's not free. So if you, you know, if you go to a system and you guys have to give them vials or some wine, they're going to pay for it. I mean, everybody gets reimbursed at the end of the day, but it's just having access to get, let everybody know right away, hey, we're in an emergency, everyone's going to start getting phone calls, you know? A tornado came through a couple of months ago. We were out there at 3:00 in the morning taking generators out there, and all the towns nearby, and we showed up and there was like 40 people out there with generators and water, before most people had even woken up. So it just helps short response times, is really all it does, and it's, it can help you guys find really specific parts. There's been times where systems have been, they've talked to Kansas, Arkansas, and down in Texas suppliers, and they can't get a specific part, and it turns out nine miles down the road, it was sitting on a shelf covered in dust, and they didn't even know they had it, and they just looked around because they got a sooner warn up there. So, that's the only other thing that would have to be voted on, and it would have to be signed by you because you're the mayor, just because it's a mutual aid agreement. The next is we do source water protection, so we're going to bring some drones out, and we're going to fly them around your well houses, and we're going to look at what's in the area. We're going to look at some historical data, and we're going to make sure that your water sources are protected. An example would be, I was up in the Panhandle, and funny little town, their police department, the city hall across the street from each other, two mobile homes, in the wides. And then next to the police department was their well for their town. And they thought it was all good and safe. Well, I was looking at pictures of the town on Google before I made my trip out there, and I saw that back in the 50s, they had a gas station where the well was, and they didn't know it was there. It was on no city plans, they just, they had a couple of tornadoes come through over the years, and they lost their city hall a couple of times, so they had no clue it was there. They ended up taking a Baco out there, and it had like 300, 400 gallons of old nasty red feel on it. That just full rust right next to their wellhouse, about 30 feet, so.
So when you mention drones, we have, we would have to let our citizens know about that, wouldn't we?
As far as I know, no. All you have to do is make sure that you're in illegal airspace, because we're a business operating it, but that's something that. Yeah, I mean, we've never had anybody.
The only reason I was asking is because there's been a couple of people that come to me and said.
Shoot them out of the sky?
They have drones flying around and over their property randomly and.
Yeah, so, so from a legal standpoint, the airspace above someone's property is not their domain.
You don't own the air above your land.
Yeah, you know, now if someone's hovering it 10 feet from a window with a camera pointed in, that's pretty obvious. But, you know, if someone shoots our drone out of the sky, they're going to end up paying for it.
They got a call on a drone one night, Spencer did, and it turned out to be a raccoon in the tree.
Did you rescue the raccoon?
The raccoon, he wasn't hiding, he was just hanging out.
As much as Spencer likes animals, I thought he probably climbed to the tree and got the raccoon down.
Much as Spencer has.
Why not?
But something else cool with the drones, they got great cameras on them. We have one we're getting repaired that we use for water loss, it's got a thermal camera. So in the summertime, we can go fly around fields, look for cold spots to where the water leaks are. In the summertime, they're going to be warmer spots. It's cool in the wintertime, because if it's a sewer, if you have a crack in your sewer system, you'll see hot steam coming out of the ground, and it'll be all discolored from the rest. We can also take pictures while in the area, if you're guys' website, if you'd want us to. We can inspect your water tower while we're out here.
Stop it, me. I'm sorry, we are getting delirious.
That's fine.
It was the steam.
It was the staff.
It was the steam. Yes, I'm very sorry.
You're fine.
I'm distracted.
Oh, no, it was raccoon, sorry.
You guys are not hostile, that's all I care, I had to have chairs. And the last thing that we do is I and I studies to where, that's not the only other cost to your system as well. It's about 40 bucks, you have to buy your own candles. And we bring out all the equipment, and we'll pretty much with pressure push smoke through your sewer system. And what that's going to show us is where you guys have water infiltration. Typically, what we'll do is we'll find a bunch of cleanouts that don't have caps on them. Every now and then, we'll find residents in a town that have ran their rain, like their gutters into the.
Drainouts.
Yeah, which, huge note, you can't do that. That's super bad for your guys' lagoons and the ecology that's happening out there and all the little bugs. So, and then, you know, we'll find cracked seals on manholes often. And with that, you guys get a full GPS report that we put onto your map. So that way, after seven days, when someone mows their grass and the spray paint's gone, you still know where everything is, so. And that is, that is it, that is what the program is, so.
How do we start?
So if you guys vote it, I have an actual copy to be signed, and that would be it.
I can get motion to proceed with the Long Branch Sustainability Program presented by Logan Davis for, on behalf of the Oklahoma Rural Water Association.
A second.
Mayor?
Yes.
Autumn, yes, Sarah.
Yes.
Justin.
Yes.
This is all so cool.
Yeah, if you guys want to be involved in any of the process, just let us know.
I would totally love to walk around and.
Yeah, it's super cool stuff and.
It is very cool. You do a lot of detailed things, and that's incredible.
Yeah, and pretty much everything that we're going to offer is going to come with reports and recommendations afterwards, so.
It's just going to make us better.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Well, you know, you got to take care of.
It's a good organization to care about Oklahoma cities.
Absolutely.
We do all of this.
So, and particularly, you know, the small towns in Oklahoma, because you know, they typically get forgotten about. And what will happen is you'll have towns that, 1,000 people, and then they'll have 800, and then they'll have 600, and then all of a sudden, no one young will stay in the town because there's dirty water and no jobs. Because business won't come to an area with bad water, so.
This is awesome.
Keep the infrastructure up.
It's true, true, true.
Like, do you have to accept us, or are we, can we?
No, that's it, just sign this, and you guys are part of it.
You are the cool club. Sign this now or sign.
Yes ma'am, I'm going to send you guys copies, but you guys can have them for your records as well.
Fancy. Thank you so much for being patient with us and being patient with us again, and then.
Didn't realize you had to sit that long for.
Oh, no problem. I've had people yell at me before. That's when we do rates.
Over this?
That's when we do rates.
Yeah, that's when we do rates.
We'll get that later, don't we?
I got to take a picture of you with us now.
What?
I will have to, it's part of my job, so.
Is it true, Jamie?
Do you want this, do you want this for Perkins?
Well, yeah. Oh, Sarah.
You should get the bike.
I don't, I don't take.
What, why not, yeah, we'll put it on our website, we have Instagram even.
I'm good. I just got the biggest guilt. It looks like I have a disease or something, but.
Also, on our website, we have a classifieds page to where you guys can post it for selling things.
I'm sure that's a nice page just because I'm cracking up.
So if you guys want to post in the open positions for anything within your water wastewater system, you can on our website. I believe you guys are members, correct?
Yes.
You guys are paid members, so you guys want to check much of what we can offer. We also have circuit riders that can come out.